Good evening and welcome to the February 16th, 2022 Meetings of the Lower Merion Board of Commissioners. You will see I am not wearing a mask tonight. We are starting a new policy here at the Board of Commissioners where the speaker or someone who is addressing the board can choose if they so want to not wear a mask. If you prefer to keep one on when you're addressing the board, please feel free to keep one on. And that's just in light of the evolving coronavirus situation. I think we all understand well by now that the best way to stop the spread of coronavirus is of course vaccines, boosters, and continuing to wear a high-quality mask, which is why we are going to continue to ask everyone in the audience and the people on the dais when they are not speaking to continue to wear their mask. But the speakers may unmask tonight if they so choose. We have four meetings this evening. We have the Police Committee, the Finance Committee, the Administrative and Human Resources Committee, and a Board of Commissioners meeting. And we will start the evening off with the Police Committee, and I recognize its Chair, Commissioner McCombe.
Thank you, President Sinai. We have two items on the Police Committee agenda tonight, both related to personnel matters. With us tonight is our Police Superintendent Michael McGrath, who will walk us through the issues that we're considering. Superintendent McGrath, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So everybody can hear me better, I will remove it, but I will proudly say that I'm vaccinated and fully boosted. Tonight, I'm recommending the promotion of an officer to the rank of Sergeant to fill a vacant position in the Patrol Division. And if you approve, this will be effective February 21st. Under Civil Service regulations, a selection can be made from the top candidates that are in the civil service pool past the testing process. Our command staff has met with the top three eligible candidates for the position and unanimously recommend that we promote Officer Eric Freeze to the rank of Sergeant. I'd like to take a moment to give you a little bit of background on Eric. I know we discussed this pre-board as it is a personnel matter, but I think the community would like to know a little bit about Eric as he takes on this new responsibility. He joined our department in May of 2014. During his career, he has worked in patrol, the emergency response team. He's been a platoon investigator and a field training officer. He has a bachelor's degree in criminology as well. He consistently receives high rankings in his annual evaluation. He is the recipient of two unit commendations, one merit commendation, and one heroism commendation. He's received five letters of appreciation from the community, and Eric has received or been nominated for nine other department awards between 2016 and 2020. Eric has a very strong work ethic, is extremely reliable, and takes the time to provide guidance to his coworkers with criminal investigations and the patrol duties. He's consistently demonstrated the skills and abilities to handle difficult situations, and we expect him to quickly assimilate his new job responsibilities and be a very effective supervisor in the police department. And I would ask that you approve this recommendation.
Thank you, Superintendent. I'll make a motion to we approve the promotion of Officer Eric Freeze to the Sergeant position, and ask if there's a second. And again, President Sinai, I'm going to have to rely on you because I will not be able to see the seconds or the votes.
Mr. Weyland and Zeloff, a second.
Great. Are there any Commissioner comments or questions?
Commissioner McCombe, if I may.
Sure.
So I will just note that in the presentation that we had, not only is Officer Freeze a terrific
I've joined in that segment as well. Do we have any public comment? Again, I'll rely on you, President Sinai, for locating anyone who wants to make a public comment online or in person.
No, I see no public comment.
Okay, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the recommendation, please raise your hand.
Give that to us.
Any opposed? Any extensions?
Madam Secretary, it appears that it has been carried out.
Thank you.
Superintendent, I think we have another item on the agenda.
Yes, we are asking for your approval to have the manager authorize the Civil Service Board to begin a new recruitment process. Just to recap, it may seem like we just did this, and we have. Unfortunately, during COVID, we had a long delay when we started the process pre-COVID and had to extend our time to giving the last written test to last fall. As a result of all the civil service processes since then, we were down to 17 people passing the entire process. As I stand here today, there are only 13 people in that pool, which is actually two less than when I made the issue briefing available to you last week. So there are currently 13 open budgeted positions in the police department. It is unlikely that with only 13 in the pool today that everybody will continue through the entire process and be brought in front of you for potential hiring in the future. So in order to be able to fill, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
In order to be able to fill current vacant positions and future ones going into 2023, we need to start the process again, and that's where we are today.
Very well. President Sinai, I'm going to make the motion then that we consider for recommendation of the Board authorization for the Civil Service Commission to conduct competitive examinations to establish an eligibility list for the position of probationary police officer. Do I have a second?
Commissioner McKeon has seconded that.
Thank you, Commissioner McKeon. Any Commissioner comments or questions?
Commissioner Zeloff has one.
Thank you, President. Thank you, President Sinai and Commissioner McCombe. Superintendent, can you give us some, just give us the timeframe, because when we begin a campaign to recruit and then test candidates for police officer, there's a window, right? There's a window in which candidates can apply, and then the window closes. So can you give us, give us the timeframe that this would, that would follow if we approved this?
Sure. And it's not written in stone at the moment. We'll sit down this week and finalize things, but we have been pre-planning, and we would open it up to online registration for the test, which would be given sometime in late spring, early summer. That will allow the process to occur where the written test is given to whatever number of people sign up. And then going through the summer, the next stage is oral examinations, then a combined score, and we can start backgrounds late in 2022 to potentially have these people ready for a potential hire beginning January of 2023.
Superintendent, just to follow up, there's a, there's a window in which candidates can apply, and then the window closes. And if you don't apply, by the time the window closes, you have to wait another year or more until we open up the window again. So
That window will probably be eight to 10 weeks.
Eight to 10 weeks, starting?
Within the next couple of weeks.
Next couple of weeks, so through April, May, something like that.
Correct.
Right, so people who are listening and commissioners, there are people who want to apply to be a probationary police officer in Lower Merion, they need to know the windows about to open, and then it's going to close, right? So it's time to get your application in.
It would be, and we will be advertising, as we always do, very heavily. The vast majority of people that apply now find out about this over the internet. And we continually, in fact, today, we were at a job fair. We're constantly going to job fairs to let people know about the Lower Merion Police Department and why it's a good place to work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Zeloff and Superintendent. Commissioner Churchill.
Thank you. Superintendent McGrath, I know you've always had an aggressive policy to invite minorities, women, to, you know, fill vacancies. Would you quickly just review how you do it, what you do?
As I know, we go to job fairs, we go all over. We go to particularly institutions that have a higher number of minority student population. We go to job fairs in the city of Philadelphia, all over Southeast Pennsylvania, where we can, want to try to get as diverse a pool of potential candidates as we can. And like I said, this is almost now a year-round process for us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other Commissioner comments or questions?
If I may, Commissioner McCombe.
Certainly, go ahead. Commissioner Berheim.
Very much. Superintendent McGrath, I know that our target number is 136 for the police officers. We're at what currently?
123.
123. So even if we were to get all 13 of these to go through the process, we're still short, and then we have to have to wait to the next opportunity to even get more. And if I may remind everybody, for the last time we went through this, we started, I think, at 14 and ended up with six, if those numbers, if I'm correct.
Yes.
And then what occurs, some people weed out through the system, some decide to go elsewhere, whatever it is. So we're, we're still staring at a shortfall within our, our police, you know, department, who, we have many, many requests all the time for, for the assistance of our fine department. So we need to recognize that, and I point that out so that we move forward with this, recognizing that we're going to be doing this again in short order. Okay. Yeah.
Thank you, Berheim, and excellent, excellent points. Any, any other Commissioner comments or questions?
I don't see any here, Commissioner McCombe.
Okay, any public comments, either in the room or online?
Madam Secretary?
We do not have anyone.
Okay, I'll call the vote then. All those in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Any extensions? Madam Secretary, it looks like that passes unanimously. Thank you, Superintendent McGrath, and congratulations to Officer Freeze on a very well-deserved promotion. Thank you. Back to you, President Sinai.
Thank you very much, Commissioner McCombe. The next committee is the Finance Committee, and I recognize its Chair, Commissioner Zeloff.
Thank you very much, President Sinai. We have but one item on tonight's Finance Committee. It is for the committee to consider awarding a contract. This would be a contract for stormwater improvements in two different locations. One is the Remington Basin location, and the other is at Penwind Park. So why don't we start with our Chief Financial Officer, Eric Trob, who can tell us about the bids that have been received. Eric?
Thank you, Commissioner Zeloff. So we have a short Finance Committee this morning, or this evening. The idea, and we might be having more of these on board, regular board meeting nights, with some of these contracts, is so that way we can get them hopefully approved by the Board a little bit quicker, just given some of the difficulties that we might be having in terms of supply chain and things of that nature. If we can get contracts approved two weeks, three weeks quicker, it might help us hopefully get projects through the CIP pipeline a little bit quicker. So the projects that are before you tonight regarding the Remington Basin and the Penwind Park swale are very similar stormwater-related projects. They're related to our MS4 matters as well. So we bid these projects both independently and also jointly. So that way, there could either be a split award, or if the lowest combined bidder was, was the lowest bidder on both projects, we could also hopefully save a little bit of money by having kind of a deduct if they both award. So the joint award to Flyway Excavating is the most financially advantageous to the township. Flyway has done similar work and performed well for the township in the past. This project is funded through the Capital Projects Fund, it was budgeted in the stormwater facilities management project. We also are, do have budgeted about $65,000 in recreation development fees for this project. But in looking at this project in light of what the Board adopted in January in terms of the ARP, this likely is going to be our first project in that stormwater classification that the Board approved for ARP funding that will likely be reimbursed with ARP dollars. I know there's been some questions about the project. I believe Ms. Heller might be in the audience tonight to help answer those questions around trees and things of that nature. I know that overall, there is an increase in the number of trees with this project from where, when it will start to when it will finish. But I think that's it for the finances, you know, in terms of overall, it has the approval of Public Works, the Director of Park and Recreation, and you have the memo from our Township Engineer. Happy to answer any questions, or if Donna's there, if she wants to add anything, she can feel free.
Thank you, Eric. Why don't we start with any questions on the bids and the pricing? Eric, it looks to me like the bid, the opportunity for bidders to bid on both, in which the winning, apparent winning bidder offered a $3,000 reduction, in fact, caused them to be the winning bidder for both projects.
It caused them to be the winning bidder on, on both projects, yes. It would have been split awards, they would have been maybe, there's like a $300 difference on, on one of the projects. So yes, that, having that, that joint award and offering that deduct and them offering that was advantageous to the township.
And what's before us is a bid award recommendation that is $37,000 higher than the estimate or 7% greater. And this, the estimates were prepared by Panone probably some time ago. Bowting your head, yes. Okay. Do any, any members of the committee have any questions on the pricing or the bids? Seeing none, thank you for coming, Donna. Can you describe the scope of each project briefly?
Absolutely.
Because they are two separate locations, and they're both MS4 stormwater improvement projects.
Absolutely. The, the goal of both projects are the same, to reduce sediment loads in the stream. So the, the goal is the same, the, the methods are slightly different. Since the basin is a retention basin, there are some wetlands and some no-mo areas that need to be reestablished, which will help with the sediment reduction and slowing of the water before it enters the stream. For the bioswale at Penwind, it is an institution of, we received, we did a master plan for Penwind Park in 2017. During that process, we heard from a number of neighbors that along Yarmouth that was stating that they were getting floodwaters from the park that would flood their backyard. So in an effort to address that, the, the swale concept was introduced to the master plan. And as we worked through the MS4 projects, it came to the top as far as being able to get credits for our reductions. So the swale is, is basically depth of, at its deepest, one foot. It tapers down from a 10-foot-wide swale in various places down to that one foot, and it's vegetated with natural vegetation, native vegetation. There are some tree removals. Many of them are either dead and dying or invasive. There are a few that are native, healthy trees, and we're going to do a pre-construction meeting, which we do with all projects onsite, where we cite the location to determine what we can save and what we don't, what we can't, absolutely can't save, to establish the swale to basically collect the water, filter it before it enters the stream at Penwind Park.
Thank you very much, Donna. What's the number of trees to be planted as replacements at the Penwind bioswale proposal?
There are 26 native trees to be replanted. Overall, there's 21 proposed to be removed. 13 of those are, are greater than a 12-inch diameter. The majority of them are less than 12 inches. And as I said, a majority of them, of the larger species are basically totem poles, they're, they're, they're dead. And we're planting 26 native trees, 46 native shrubs, 1,545 perennial plugs.
Okay, thank you very much. Why don't we start with questions or comments from Commissioners? Commissioner Churchill, would you, do you have questions or comments, especially since the Penwind Park bioswale is in your ward?
I would just say that we have a number of concerned citizens on Yarmouth Road. We, Donna and I and a number of other officials met with them a week ago last Monday to do a walkthrough. We also had a Zoom meeting a week ago last Tuesday to, again, address a number of their concerns. We also alerted them that, about this meeting, the assignment of a contract tonight, and I, I don't know if there's anyone in the audience or online, but more than willing to, you know, listen. And this is an ongoing process, that a lot of questions about this program is going to be answered once we have approved a contractor. There's concern about maybe moving the swale this way or that. There's certainly going to be a tree inventory that neighbors are going to have input on what trees may remain, may not remain, and also there was a concern about properly planting trees, shrubs, plants, as well as addressing stormwater management that goes from really Wilkshire Road all the way up to the tennis court. And I look forward to working with the friends of Penwind Park on this project, and I would ask that the, this contract be awarded tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Churchill. Other members of the committee with any questions or comments? Commissioner O'Neil.
Thank you very much. Mike, I have two questions. One pertains to the Remington Basin. So just so that I'm clear, we're proposing the alternate two that has to do with the clearing and grubbing only, so we're not going to be widening any path. Does this include, we're removing the trail that's there, so take it, from taking it from an impervious surface to a grass surface, is that correct?
No, the, the trail will remain at its current width. It's, it's approximately three and a half feet in, in width at the top of the burn. The intent was to basically redo that to allow for vehicles to access without causing ruts and erosion. But that is not going to be done. The cost was prohibitive.
Yeah.
It didn't make sense. It was pretty ridiculous.
Okay, and then, thank you. And then my second question pertains to the conversation at Penwind regarding the swale seed mix versus, not to get too technical, but the swale seed mix versus the plugs. So we, in terms of comparison, at the MS4 project at Harrington Preserve, we noticed a real degradation in the end of the plugs. They failed because of storm, they washed away in major storms. So the question is, is there some higher degree of success rate for a plug in normal conditions over seedlings, given the price point? Does it make sense to forego the plugs and stick with the seeds? Or are we, is there a strong recommendation in favor of the plugs, knowing they're more expensive and that they also have a high, a high degree of fail rate in stormwater?
Yeah, I, I would say that, that seeds would have a higher rate of failure, just due to the fact that they're buoyant, that once, if, if we get a substantial storm, it, nothing will really hold up to it. And that's why we have to really rely on the warranty for the plant material as it moves forward through the process. Yes.
And I would say, just as a, as a recommendation, I do think Flyway, from, again, my experience in Ward 11 with the MS4 project, they were great to work with. And the, the thing we have running against us are the severity of storms, and sometimes the best contractors still, it becomes a really complicated, hard project to manage. So, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Neil. I know that the Flyway excavating work in Harrington Park in your ward was, there was a lot, a great deal of follow-up after the initial construction, and your view of the contractor's adherence to the, to their warranty is important
Yes.
Because work had to be done, that extended out the term of that contract. Other members of the committee with questions or comments? Any online? Seeing none, Jody, do we have any members of the public online who have any questions or comments?
I do not see any raised hands.
Do we have any members of the public in the room here who wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, I will move that the Finance Committee recommended the Board of Commissioners approval to award a contract for Remington Basin improvements and Penwind Park bioswale, general site construction, to the following bidder in accordance with the bids received on Tuesday, February 1st, and the recommendation of the Chief Financial Officer with the approval of the Director of Public Works and the Township Engineer to Flyway Excavating Inc. for the lump sum bid contingency items and two alternates in the total amount of $537,495. Do I have a second? Seeing one from Commissioner The two Sean. Sean Kramer, exactly, okay. Having the motions been made and seconded, all those in favor so indicate by raising your hand. Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries unanimously, Madam Secretary, President Sinai, other than the little glitch at the end, that concludes the business of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Commissioner Zeloff. So the next committee meeting is the Administrative and Human Resources Committee, and I recognize its Chair, Commissioner Churchill.
He's actually continuing to make
Oh, he is?
Yes.
Okay, well, then I recognize his Vice Chair, Commissioner Berheim.
Okay, thank you. We, getting our scorecard lineup this evening. So thank you, President Sinai. We, we actually have two items on the Administrative and Human Resource Committee this evening. The first is to authorize advertisement for, for some proposed ordinance changes of the Township Code, Chapter 7, and before making a motion and describing some amendments to the motion, which have been circulated to the Board, permit a little bit of background and maybe from some of the comments that many of us have received in connection with this, it will help alleviate a few concerns. The overarching goal here is really just to bring the code, our code into conformity to what our practice is. So what occurred is that it was recognized by President Sinai and the Vice President Gaveran that while we have a list of some standing committees, some of them are a little bit obsolete from what our actual practice is, and we needed to add others. For example, a sustainability committee, given all that's gone on, is a, a new standing committee that we will have. We had a Committee for Township Properties, and that was dovetailed into Open Space and Township Properties Committee, which made, made a lot of sense. And the Telecommunications Committee, what we found over time is they really weren't doing anything in that, when those items came up, it came up to the Board, be it in finance or, or something else. So while it's eliminated, the task is not eliminated, and this was, was an update. Well, when you start doing updates, then you start to take a harder look at it, and our manager and secretary realized, all right, why don't we do some of the other changes so that the code will actually conform to, to what we were doing? And that, that's what came out, you know, in, in reference to the And that's what came out, you know, in reference to this proposal that we have before us in order to make things consistent with actually how we practice. One of the concerns that we've heard, which I can address upfront, is that in Section 7-10E, which provided a schedule of events on the agenda, to go ahead and modify that so that it's somewhat eliminated, and what's indicated is that the Board President, along with the Township Manager and Secretary, will set forth the agenda and the batting order for which it takes place. That means the specific order of events is listed here, we're not necessary to follow, and that's exactly what we've been doing. So there are times where we will change things dependent upon if there is something before the Board where there will be a large number of public members that are going to speak, as opposed to having them wait. We try to, you know, move that forward. Or sometimes we recognize there are professionals that people are paying for so that they don't have to pay for, you know, their time waiting here. We'll try to move that forward. And there is a case-by-case or meeting-by-meeting adjustment. This just recognizes that which we do. Some people were concerned that if we go ahead and we make some of these other adjustments to it, it was eliminating, for example, the opportunity for public privilege or public comment. It is not. That is contained in Section 712 of the Code, which happens to provide that a citizen shall be provided a reasonable opportunity to address the Board on any agenda item or any public matter in which the township has jurisdiction or authority. This privilege shall occur during the part of the agenda entitled "Public Comment" and "Public Privilege" of the floor. That's a requirement of the First Township Code. We have not written it out of our own code, nor could we. And even if we didn't have it in there, the First Class Township Code would control. So the overarching concept behind this was merely to bring our code into conformity of what we do. And trust me, there are other aspects of this code which can indeed be modernized and written. I noted to my colleagues before we began, there's even one section which requires our Secretary to have neatly typed minutes put into the book, as opposed to unneatly typed minutes, I guess. But in any event, I bring that out, there are other items that eventually we'll take a look at for the code to go ahead and modernize. So when these came out, there were a few other suggestions to tinker with the tinkering, and they are, I will point out, as follows. By the chief tinker, yeah. I don't know what Commissioner Zeloff had to drink before he came here. But we all should get a cup of it. So Section 78A was modified so that, the way it was drafted, it says, "The jurisdiction of each committee as to the various classes of matters assigned to it shall be by the decision and at the direction of the Board or the President of the Board of Commissioners, subject to confirmation of the Board." Subject to confirmation of the Board would almost mean that we have to come out here and have a vote every single time. We've never done that. But what has happened all the time is there are no unilateral decisions, and that whatever has come up, the President of the Board, whoever that individual may be, has always done things in consultation with the Board. And so that is the new phrase that is in there at the end of it, from the amendments to the amendment, of saying that, "At the direction of the President of the Board of Commissioners, upon consultation with the Board." The next amendment is 278E, so that it will now read, "Each committee shall report to the Board of Commissioners as may be requested by the President of the Board of Commissioners." And that's actually what has happened. But every time each committee meets, such as now, it's in essence making a report. So we haven't really deleted anything, but if there is some other item which is going to go on the agenda, then that's how it comes forth. And those agendas are set generally Board Officers' meetings with the President, the Vice President of the Board, our Township Manager, our Assistant Manager, and our Secretary. So again, this is just putting forth what actually takes place. Then the next item was to 710B, and this is, "The proposed agenda for any stated meeting shall be forwarded to all members of the Board and shall be available to the public at least 48 hours prior to the stated monthly meeting. In addition, the agenda for stated monthly meetings, adjourned monthly meetings, and special meetings shall be available in the Township Building and through other means as deemed appropriate." In today's modern age, where we are capable of posting things on the Township website, that would be the primary, quote, "other means." But sometimes, for whatever reasons in the technological world, that can't always necessarily happen. So that's why this is a bit open-ended, saying, "And through other means as deemed appropriate," gives our Secretary some leeway to decide what's going on. And if it were to be restricted, for example, say it must be on the website or the Internet, and there was some glitch or problem, not that we've ever had that, but if there was some glitch or problem, until it was resolved, whatever we had wouldn't be official. So this keeps it open so that we can accomplish that. And I'm sure where we can post things on the Internet, that we will go ahead and do so. And then the other last adjustment to the amendments was for Section 714B, which states that ordinance resolutions or other matters or subjects requiring action by the Board, what's removed is, "Must be introduced and sponsored." All right? And then it's now going to have that removed and inserted, "May be proposed by a member of the Board, the Township Manager or Township Solicitor, and may present ordinances, resolutions, or other matters or subjects to the Board for consideration. Upon introduction of any ordinance, a copy shall be distributed to each Board Member, to the Township Secretary, and to the Township Manager, and in such other public places as the Board may designate. Then added shall be, 'All such matters shall then proceed in accordance with procedural rules established by the Board.'" Here's why that's now being added. When the phrase "must be introduced and sponsored" is being removed, that phrase is something, at least in my view, I always thought was akin to like Robert's Rules, where we have a motion and then a second, here an introduction and a sponsor. You need to have that to proceed because currently, we adhere to Robert's Rules. That's a requirement that's in another section of the Code. We have the option that someday to amend that, to say, all right, you know what, Robert's Rules really aren't working for us, we're going to do X, Y, and Z. So thus, inserted into this is that "All such matters shall then proceed in accordance with the procedural rules established by the Board." At present, it's consistent with Robert's Rules, so you must have that introduction or sponsor, AKA, a motion and a second, but it gives us the leeway, should we make some amendments at a future time, the Code has already taken care of that. So, with that short explanation of what I am sure those who put this together would be quick and easy, what I would like to do now is to make the motion, AKA introduction. And the motion as presented in our materials reads as follows, "To consider for recommendation of the Board of Commissioners authorizing the Township Secretary to advertise notice of intent to adopt an ordinance to amend the code of the Township of Lower Merion, Chapter 7, Board of Commissioners procedural code, to conform the code to current practices involving township hours of operation, notices of meaning and ordinances, information and the form thereof to be provided to the Board of Commissioners and public, permitting the President of the Board to act on procedures during meetings and in the exercise of powers given to the President, updating the names of currently designated permanent committees of the Board, and providing for co-chairs and vice-chairs of such committees, specifically authorizing the Township Secretary to open mail address to the Board, limiting the power of Board Members to speak for the Board when one member thereof has been designated to do so." And I'm going to add to the motion as further amended by those additional amendments provided to the Board, which I have enumerated thus far. Do I have a second? Vice President Gaveran. So let's first, are there any comments or questions from members of this Board? Commissioner Zeloff. Where's that drink? Go ahead.
I thought you finished yours. Commissioner Bernheim, thank you. My question is, so on page 11 of our agenda would be on Section 7-15, Public Notice and Hearings. Section C, which is, "No final action shall be taken on the following types of ordinances and amendments thereto without a public hearing thereon." The current Code lists six categories of ordinances, and the proposal before us removes the last one, which is the most fundamental thing we do, which is adoption of a budget. So my question for our manager or our secretary is, why have you proposed to remove the adoption of a budget from the requirement to have a public hearing, or, public hearing, it's singular, before we adopt?
So Commissioner, we removed that from your procedural rules because the First Class Township Code was amended, which is the state code by which we operate. You no longer are required to adopt a budget by ordinance. You have the right to do it by motion, by resolution. But you all also have a responsibility and a requirement in the First Class Township Code to advertise the adoption of your budget. So it's covered in the First Class Township Code. It no longer needs to be that restriction here in case the Board, which you may choose to do so by ordinance, but you could also adopt by resolution.
Okay. So that enables us to have the option as to whether to continue our current approach in which we have not one, but two public hearings. We could have one, or now we could have zero.
You still have to have the public hearings on the budget that we do every year. That's a requirement in the First Class Township Code. So all that's really changing is the method by which you cast your vote on the budget, be it ordinance or resolution or motion.
Great. Thank you for explaining that. All right. Thank you very much, Commissioner Bernheim.
It starts, "No final action." So the other aspects of that remain.
Got it.
That's a good point. I probably should have made that one, or noted that one as well.
Any other comments or questions? Yes, Commissioner Courtney.
Thank you, Commissioner Bernheim. Just very briefly, I want to applaud the action by President Sinai and Vice President Gaveran to convert our ad hoc Environmental Initiatives Committee to a standing committee and to rename it the Sustainability Committee. I think it's a demonstration of your leadership and a demonstration of the leadership of this township and our commitment to creating a more sustainable future for Lower Merion. And I'm excited to see us take a step in that, another step in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well-stated, and I think everybody agrees with all of those comments. Anybody else? Seeing none, are there any? Oh, my apologies. First, Commissioner Gilda Kramer, and then Commissioner McCombe.
You let somebody else go ahead while I control someone. I'll be right back.
Okay. We'll be right along. Commissioner McCombe.
Thank you. That's a tough act to follow, Commissioner Bernheim. And I'm not referring to you either, but I do want to commend it, want to commend the committee for its work and note that a similar amount of work probably can be done on other parts of our Code, specifically the Enforcement Code. And at one point, there was a working group to review it, and several of us were sort of surprised at how many things were inconsistent within that. So that's probably something that needs to be done across a variety of sections of our Code. But I think this is a great, a great step in the right direction and sort of a model of a good way to get it done. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McCombe. And, you know, that's something that has been previously discussed, and no doubt, without even looking to my left, that President Sinai is going to keep that as a priority. Commissioner Kramer, Gilda Kramer.
And dog.
Who's been banished. I went through this in some detail and thought that many of the changes made a lot of sense. The overall sense that I had from looking at it is that it changes in general the balance of the responsibility or authority between the Board President and the other Commissioners who are doing much of the work of the Board. And I have a particular concern about the deletion of the changes, the deletions in 5D and E. I wonder if this is the appropriate time for me to make a motion to amend.
First of all, which section? I apologize, I did not hear you.
Sorry about that. I may have to banish someone else. It's on page, five, page?
Page eight.
Page eight, at the top, Sections D and E, where I don't, I do not think that those changes should be made. Because what those changes basically mean is that the President is permitted to deny a request of a committee chair for a committee meeting. And I don't believe that a committee chair should have to marshal nine votes to overrule a decision of a Board President to deny a committee meeting when a committee has been working on an issue at the direction of that Board President. I think that the balance as it is currently designed is one that makes sense, and that we should be following that practice instead of changing the code to create a new practice or a different practice that is less inclusive and less democratic among all of the different Commissioners. So I'd like to know whether this is the appropriate time for me to make a motion to delete the changes to those two sections, or if I should make that motion later.
Well, here's what I'd like to be able to do, Commissioner Kramer, is allow us to get public comment, and then after public comment, we'll, you know, go forward with, prior to a vote, anybody who wishes to make some, any amendments, and we'll give you the first opportunity. All right? So let's first stay with any questions or comments by any other Commissioners. Seeing none, now let's open it up to members of the public. Is there anybody from the public who'd like to speak? We're going to request, due to our new policy about those who wish to take off the mask, if you would use the podium, which is to my right, it's further away from everybody, and then we'll give you, everybody will have an opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Joseph Abramson, Valhalla Kinwood. I just had like a couple of questions or comments, and I first wanted to mention that the draft ordinance that was on the website, and that's still on the website now, doesn't appear to be the same one that you mentioned, because there was some extra stuff on there. So, you know, if I miss something, it's probably that. Regarding 76 for the Board meetings, you know, and I know you wanted to change it because we don't always start on time or it's a little different, but the thing is that people are creatures of habit. We know that 7:30 is Board of Commissioners, and if we come, sometimes it's late, sometimes it's really late, but at least we know that it's not going to be at 6:00 or at 5:00. And, you know, we should really keep it where we want it to be at 7:30. That way, anyone will know it starts 7:30. And also, if people are running late, they could kind of figure out where the Board of Commissioner meeting will be up to and show up at that point in time. And the same thing with the date and time. Okay, so with the Section 578-2, which is after all the committee lists, it seems that this is a, an oversight that the Board of Commissioners has on the committees. And right now, what it's doing is it's basically taking that oversight and putting it into the hands of the President of the Board of Commissioners, which you say that we do that right now in terms of practice, but in terms of what we are, what we have availability to do is that the Board of Commissioners can decide that the committees, give them the permission to do it. But right now, it's going to be just at the hands of the President. But right now, it's going to be just at the hands of the President. The next one is Section F, where it speaks about a quorum. I just wanted to mention, because I know that with regards to the quorum for the Board of Commissioners meetings, the code mentions that seven members constitute a quorum. But it doesn't mention, or it does mention that you could start the meeting then. And if people leave, and I believe we once had it here where there are only like three people, three commissioners left, that's still considered a quorum because the meeting started with a quorum. And you might want to mention, I don't know if it's in this section, but at least, or keep it in mind for Board of Commissioners code, that even if seven members is a quorum, it has to stay at that level during the whole meeting. Also, with regards to 7-10B, current practice right now is to either email or post on Facebook all the committee meetings and Board of Commissioners meetings, which is great. And I think, you know, we should continue to do that and make mention of that here. Because right now, we don't, you don't have to do that because it's not in the code. But I think it's a good idea, especially now people aren't necessarily reading the newspaper where the notices have to be, or might not be getting emailed. But, you know, I see that on Facebook, all the different committees or the departments post a notice of meeting. And I agree with Commissioner Kramer with regards to Section E. Before I agree, let me just get to the first part. With Section E, when you're getting rid of the set order, I refer back to my previous comment where everyone knows that this is generally the order that meetings go. You know, we come in, we have the roll call, we have the approvals, we have the two comment sections, and then we have everything else. We shouldn't change that just because on the, once in a while, we may have to change it due to necessities, like you mentioned before. With regards to Sections C and E in 7-12, this again is putting a lot of power in the hands of the presiding officer. Originally, it said the presiding officer, with approval of the majority of the commissioners present, can impose a time limit. Now, it's basically the presiding officer. And there's no even option. In Section E, it was removed where all the other members of the Board of Commissioners can decide to overrule the President and say, "We want to give more time." You're now giving one person full authority to either extend, or deny, or cut off people talking. With regards to Section B of Article 4, 714B, it might be good to also, and this again is not necessarily a legal issue because I don't, we don't have that in Pennsylvania. But while we have ordinances, can be introduced by the Board of Commissioners, by the Township Secretary or the manager or staff. It should also have where it can be introduced, or some sort of mechanism to get introduced at the hands of citizens. Right now, we have a petition, but it's, I want to say, an ad hoc process where people can do a petition. We don't know how many signatures you need. It's all whoever decides to run the committees. Okay, we need five signatures, people on this block or this area. It might have a good, you know, be ahead of the game and say, you know, we allow citizens to introduce some sort of petition, or at least introduce to someone who will have to write the ordinance. And that's it, thank you.
Before you leave, and then people are going to have a chance to respond, but I see you have your notes. Your second point, which section were you referring to?
The habit one? There was one, the board meetings were 7-6?
No, it was section A. One after.
7-8, Section 2.
All right, thank you. Anybody else who would like to address the board?
Hi, can you hear me?
Please introduce yourself.
Yes. My name is Annie Dennison, 319 West Spring, Ward 4. I sent what for me is a lengthy email with a number of concerns.
Can you try to speak up a little bit? Go ahead.
Yes, is that better?
Much.
Do I need to go from the beginning?
No, we got Annie Dennison, go ahead.
Yeah. So I sent what for me is a lengthy email with concerns. A lot of them have been addressed by Ms. Kelly in a return email. Thank you very much, I appreciated that. Ms. Kramer reached out to me as well. Commissioner Kramer, thank you very much. And Commissioner Bernheim, I appreciate the clarification of a lot of the rules or the changes. There's one that I do feel that I would like to underscore, and that is in Section 712E. Sorry, I'm nervous. This reads, "Any person making offensive, insulting, threatening, insolent, slanderous, or obscene remarks, or who becomes boisterous, who makes threats against any person or against public order and security while in the boardroom, shall be forthwith removed at the direction of the presiding officer, excuse me, from further audience at the meetings. And what's scratched out is unless permission to continue was granted by the majority vote of the board members present." Sorry. I would urge you to not eliminate that clause, allowing for a majority of board members to allow a person to come back into the room and speak. And the reason for that, I think it stands to reason that if someone is being offensive, insulting, threatening, slanderous, obscene, or is making threats, that the majority of the board members would not vote to allow that person back in. So really, my concern is with those words, insolent and boisterous. I'm a kindergarten teacher. I think I've told you that before. I'm familiar with insolence and boisterousness. To me, boisterousness is those 20 children jumping for joy when Charlie Bucket gets that golden ticket. Now, I know that's not what you're talking about. But the point is that that word, boisterous, allows for a wide range of interpretation. Now, get to the word insolence. In my role as a teacher, in my role as a parent, and in other leadership capacities I've had in different areas of the community, I've noticed that insolence is often criticism that I'm not ready to hear. And for that reason, I would really strongly urge you to leave that final clause in that area. I just don't feel like, while I have never, ever, ever seen behavior, I mean, I haven't come, I watch meetings as much as I can. And while I've never seen behavior that would come even close to any of this, I would rather have that provision there. I'd rather pull that meat, you know, and make sure that there is an allowance for that, rather than not. Yeah, I believe all of my other concerns were addressed, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who would like to address the board? Please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Barry Polis. I'm the broker of record of Polis Real Estate. Had a real estate office here in Lower Marion for 37 years. I'm also a resident on Balla Avenue. So a few issues that I'd like to address, I can't take them case in point. I'd like to first thank you all for all the really great things that you do for our township and your dedication and the time that you commit to this committee, which I think all of us as residents and citizens should laud. Nonetheless, we have a lot of regulations in this township that are not really being enforced. And the laws, I find, are lacking teeth frequently. When there's noncompliance, it requires three letters of notification before we can do anything, particularly in the case of the new developers who damage public works properties or who are not clearing sidewalks, et cetera.
Mr. Polis.
What I'm suggesting is that you implement fines as opposed to...
Excuse my interruption. Right now, we're focused just on the changes that are in the, to our township code that's before us. That's the only issue right now, it's before us.
I understand, but one of the commissioners just mentioned something about the fact that they didn't feel that there was enough enforcement. So this pertains to enforcement of code.
Right, but we're talking about just this specific code and the amendments that are before the board to be, or before this committee to be recommended to the board.
Was there a previous public comment that I'm late for?
No, during, we've got a board meeting. During that time, there'll be an opportunity for public privilege and public comment for other items. But this is just specifically as to these recommendations for the committee to then recommend for the board to consider for adoption.
I had one other suggestion, and I don't know if that's outside of...
If it doesn't relate to these code sections, it is. And we'll give you an opportunity later.
Indeed, if indeed it is outside of what is on this agenda, then you can tell me to the contrary. Since I'm not, since the majority of you, ladies and gentlemen, are members of the bar, I am not. So perhaps if it's been an oversight on my interpretation of this, I wanted to also suggest that there be a town crier or that people can write in their concerns. Because your general public is not able to attend these meetings regularly. There should be a person in this body who reads public comments for people who are unable to attend. And I find that that is something that has been lacking from the overall involvement of the community. And what occurs in this township is that it requires people to be here for unreasonable hours, people who are raising families who have occupations. There should be what I imagine is called a town crier. And we are lacking that. That's all I have to say. And I'm sorry if it was inappropriate.
That's quite right, Mr. Polis. And you'll be relieved to know the majority of us are not lawyers.
Thank you for your time. And again, I thank you for your contribution to our township.
Okay, okay, thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to make comment again about this proposal for the committee to present for adoption? All right, anybody online?
We have Ms. Adrian Seltzer on.
We can queue her in?
All right, got the little buttons hit. Hi, Adrian Seltzer, Winwood. I want to thank the commissioners for, and administration for their work on updating this and the definitions. And I just would like some clarifications on some of the things because they just, I wasn't able to put it together in my brain. On page 5, Article 3, Meetings. So the meetings will still be on a third Wednesday, but not necessarily at 8:00. I believe Mr. Abraham said something about people being creatures of habit. I think that there should be a set time, whether it's 8:00 or 7:30. And so people know what to expect. I know there aren't a great deal of us who attend, but still, it would be nice to do that. On page 7, on the committees, the telecommunication committee, you had already appointed commissioners, committee assignments. I was just curious as to what happens to the people that were appointed to the Town Communications Committee. Do they get a get out of jail free card? And the jurisdiction of each committee, I don't think you should take out, subject to confirmation of the board. The direction should not only be the President. We live in a democracy. And I think that that is, it should be all the board. Part B on that page, I had no idea what that meant. So there's that. I agree with Commissioner Gilda Kramer on the committees should be able to meet based on the call of their committee chair and because they are extremely, would be most familiar with what's happening in their committee. So, and would know when to meet. Also, on page 8, under Agenda B, could you put in there that these things are emailed to instead of just being posted? I know they generally are, but it would be nice to have that clarification in there. In taking up the order of, on page 9, on just deleting the whole order of a meeting, I think it would be nice if you kept it here there, but included a caveat to say that depending on situations, they can be subject to change. Because it just gives an order and it gives some, you know, creature of habit things. I know that the comments come towards the beginning of the meeting and so on and so forth. But I think to completely just erase them and make it so they could be helter-skelter is not a good change. And on the bottom of page 10, you, the following flow chart illustrates the process of ordinance approval. So there's no more process of ordinance approval? Question? I really, on page 11, I really like the idea that you're not putting a title in and you're using a preamble, which gives more description. That's really nice. And I also have a question about the adoption of the budget being taken out so it doesn't need an ordinance. I would really like to know how will that change public input and the opportunity for the public to comment on the budget? I think that is an important area for people to have a voice in. Miss Dunn? Mail. You're allowing the Township Secretary to now receive an email address to the board. Does that, I think that includes email, but now the email for public comments is only monitored between 8:00 a.m. on Monday and 12:00 p.m. on Wednesday. I think that you should either make it easier for people to get in touch with their commissioner. I keep posting the link all the time so people can find out who their commissioners are. But I think having that the email public comments only being monitored between Monday 8:00 a.m. and Wednesday 12:00 noon is not acceptable. And you could lessen the amount of work the Township Secretary does by posting the link to register for a meeting in the meeting agendas. And then she would have that much less work and be able to monitor the email. And I believe that is it. And I thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else that's online? Nobody else, all right. So we're going to back to the board for response to public comment. So I had a funny feeling President Sinai might have a few things to add to this discussion.
Well, in just a moment, I need to ask Township Management to address some of these. Since these cleanups were intended, you know, as cleanups of, you know, to match, have the code match what we actually do in reality. Let me start with some of the specific comments. And we were noting the remarkable amount of public engagement on what we thought was moving the code out of the 1960s. And, but I'm delighted. I think what it goes is to the symbolism of some of these changes, and that's important. I think we want to telegraph what we intend to do as a board and how we intend to operate. So one of the comments that was made a couple times was a consistent start time. And I am sympathetic to that. I think we all want a consistent start time. I will note that the consistent start time that was in our code was not the actual start time that we ever used. And so in part, the change is to just make it recognize that while we will have as consistent a start time as we can, to codify it means it just gets stale really fast. And why have a code that's not going to be, that's not going to be what we actually do. I will also note that we also don't want to have meetings run super late, right? And so we have a lot on the agenda. We should have the discretion to start a little earlier so we actually finish at a reasonable time. And like, some of that flexibility is important. For the committee jurisdiction, I thought Commissioner Bernheim's edits were exactly what we had intended. The original thing said, hey, the President gets to tell the committees what to do. And really, the intent was what we actually do is a process, which is the President consults with the colleagues. And that's what is given to the committees to do. to the committees to do. And so the code now matches that, as opposed to some formal vote, which we never actually did. In, but, but the process is the same. In terms of public posting, I will confess, we, we, of, of, of the, of the agenda materials, we had a bit of internal debate over it. I was on the, the side of vague language. And I think, you know, Mr. Abramson's example was, was a great one. You know, we, we post stuff on Facebook, right? Facebook stocks dropped 25% in one day, right? That, that may not be a mode of, of, you know, communication that's there in two years, right? And as you can see, our code hasn't been updated since things were typed for posting, right? So, you know, really what the board does, and what we should be doing, is communicating in all forms possible. That's email today, and in five years, it might be a different mode. So rather than saying specifically what they are, I post on our website, we do, but are there websites in 10 years? Let's just say, look, we're trying to make it available. And that's what we're trying to do. But, but I, I completely understand that, you know, we don't want the reading of this to be, oh, the board is not going to have to communicate to the public. I mean, it's important that we communicate to the public. And I think Commissioner Zeloff's questions about the, about the budget process, like, was, was exactly speaking to that, right? The most public that we can be is really, really what we aspire to do. The other thing that, that I want to touch on was Ms. Dennison's point about, about, you know, kicking people out of the room, to a degree, boisterousness and, you know, is, is in the eyes of the beholder, right? And I don't think we want to let some future board, I mean, this board, I would never do this. I don't want to let some future board be in the position where, you know, the, the presiding, you know, official over that particular portion can say, hey, I don't like what you're saying. I'm going to have a police officer remove you, right? We, we should not do that. And I'll, and I'll make an amendment at the time to, 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 you know, put that one back. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, very good. Anybody else like to respond to public comment? Certainly, Vice President Gavert.
Thank you, Commissioner Bernheim. Just a couple of comments. One, I know there were a couple of comments about, you know, leaving a start time in there and seven, you know, 7:30, and using different means of communication versus what's being done in these amendments, which is really kind of to broaden it out and take out the order of things in the meeting. I don't think, right, not I don't think. I know the intention of this is not to start one meeting at six o'clock, start another meeting at eight o'clock, start the next meeting next week at 7:30. That doesn't help the board. That doesn't help the public. That doesn't help anybody. But it does, by taking things like that out, by taking out the order of, of the events, it's not saying, one week, we're going to start with public comment, the next week, we're going to end with public comment. What it's saying is, it recognizes that sometimes that doesn't happen for whatever reason, because one item is going to have more public comment, we might move it up. Technically, as it's written now, we would be violating our ordinance when we do things like that. When we start late at 8:15, because there was a long executive session, we're violating our ordinance. This makes it so we're not doing that. It's not changing the practice. It's not saying every week is going to be a guessing game, and you're going to have no idea when to come in. That, that doesn't help anybody, and that's not what's going to happen. That, that's not how this works. This is, as President Sinai said, you know, really, this isn't something that's, that's updated often, and we don't want to have to update it often. So I wanted to make that clear, too. I also want to make clear that these, you know, we heard a little bit about, you know, taking out committee, the committee head having a say, and it's more, more power to the president of the board. I want to make it clear that none of these came from President Sinai. This is not a power grab by President Sinai. None of these came by, from me. These came from staff who saw, as Commissioner Bernheim said early, earlier, this is an opportunity to clean up some of the things based on how we're practicing. And some of the, the suggestions of, or what's currently in the code that has been eliminated, is really, it's unwieldy to do in practice. When you start having, you know, one person does one thing, and then you have a whole board voting on another thing, and it, it just doesn't make sense, and it doesn't work in practice. What, what happens is the president, and as far as I've ever known, the president is not overruling the board. The president is not doing anything untoward with, with respect to the board. And if they did, the board would not take it. And the board would not be satisfied with that, and would not go along willingly, whether it's this board or any future board, with a president who acts like a dictator, and, and takes this board under their own wing, and says, I don't care what anyone else on this board thinks. So I don't think that's a real concern. I'm comfortable that both our secretary and our manager, who, who did a very good job with these cleanups, did this for the right reason. And I think these make a lot of sense, and they reflect the reality of what's happening. The last comment I want to make in response to Ms. Seltzer, I know, you know, we've heard from you multiple times about posting the, posting the link to the meetings. And, you know, I understand that you've talked to people, and they say it's safe. Our staff has told us it is not something that we should be doing. Whether they're right, or whether they're wrong, we rely on our staff. We have a very good staff. I believe they are right. I, I, I trust them. Because of that, it means you do have to kind of write in and say, if you want to participate via Zoom. And participating via Zoom is not something we're required to do. I think it's a wonderful thing that we do. I think it's making these meetings more accessible to people. But it's not a requirement. It, it is us going above and beyond. And I believe putting a, a requirement that you have to ask for the link over a two and a half day period is not unreasonable. The agenda gets posted on Friday, then it's the weekend, and then starting at 8:00 a.m. Monday, you have the opportunity to ask for the link. Ending it on noon on Wednesday recognizes that our township secretary has a lot of work to do, especially on the days leading up to the meeting. And it's, it's unreasonable to put the burden on her to, say, you know, mere hours before the meeting, to have a flood of people coming in and asking for the link. Putting that deadline at noon, I don't think is unreasonable. Clearly, Ms. Seltzer, it hasn't been unreasonable for you. And, and you've done a wonderful job participating. And I think we all appreciate that you have been so involved. So I don't think there's a need to change that. I don't think, you made a comment about it, it should be easier to get in touch with, with your commissioner. I know from experience, I've had a lot of people who've never been involved, who have reached out to me because of one issue or another. I think as a township, or as a board, we do a very good job of, of doing as much outreach as possible. And I, while it's not, you know, if you don't know anything about local government, it may be hard to figure that out at first. But I think we do make ourselves as accessible as possible. And I don't think there's anything that we do that makes it unreasonably difficult to, to get in touch with your commissioner. So I, again, I just want to thank our township secretary and our township manager for, for making all of these amendments, and Commissioner Bernheim for improving them. And I, I fully support where we're going tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Gavert. Anybody else who wishes to make some comments? Our township secretary is motioning.
Just for one second, the discussion about committees, I, I just want to frame that for everyone. So a lot of the language in this code goes back to when committees consisted of about three, maybe four people, and they met on their own, without the, the entire board. You know, the public was invited. They happened all different times of the week, and night, and all that kind of stuff. And so, a lot of this language, you know, where it says, you know, the committee chair can call a meeting of their committee, it was because it was just like three people. There was no requirement for public notice, that sort of thing. That's why we sort of need more coordination on those sort of things, and why some of this language seems a little odd that we're taking it out. But that's the reason, because the committees were not structured the way they're structured now.
Right. Thank you very much. That, you know, an important piece of, of history, because we now meet as a committee as a whole, albeit, there's a reason that you'll see on any of our agenda, just a few people are listed as, you know, chair or vice chairs, because that's how it used to be done. Anybody else who wishes to respond to the public comment?
Are you going to be taking general comments after this?
Um, well.
Or is this the time?
You know what? Why don't we make it this be the time? Because then I think we may have some amendments and a vote, and we'll be moving on. So if you have some comment you want to make?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. So, you know, let me first thank everyone who, who put this together, and probably 95% of it is, is fine with me. And I will admit, entering tonight, I was sort of fine with the whole thing. But as I'm sitting here and listening to some of the comments, I do want to comment on two parts I'm not comfortable with. I understand, and this is where I say, as Vice President Gavert did, this is not directed against any personal, of the four people I've served under as president of the board in my time here, it's not personal to any of them. However, I think this is a situation where I think if something isn't broken, I'm not sure why we're fixing it. And I would point to two areas that have already been discussed. The first one is the article, Section 5, Article 3, A78, number 2, the one about the jurisdiction of the committees. I am, as much as I understand how it has worked, and I cannot think of a dispute that there has been with the president of the board setting a jurisdiction for a committee, I do believe that if there, there could be a disagreement about jurisdiction, and that the board should have an equal say with just the president on the jurisdiction of a committee if it comes up. Commissioner Bernheim, while I appreciate your amendment changing upon confirmation to upon consultation, I think that there is no harm in having the board confirm. And I think this would only come up if there was a legitimate dispute or disagreement. And if, if a majority of the board wanted to give jurisdiction to a committee, then that should be the decision, as opposed to the president having the sole discretion. The next one is D, about when the committees meet. I certainly understand a concern that a chair, an individual chair of a committee, maybe, could possibly be overzealous in, in wanting to call meetings of that committee that, as in our practice, now is a committee of the whole, and it could take up a lot of time. And I don't think that's appropriate. But I also don't know, again, that we have, that we should be giving any one person that decision-making, because all of us have our own perspectives. So what I would suggest, and I guess depending on how the, the wind blows in this, I might propose a suggestion, is that maybe D would say that the committee, each committee would meet upon the call of its, of its chair and vice chairs, or the president of the board, meaning that it wouldn't just be up to one committee person either. But if the vice chairs agree, and it's kind of a unanimous decision, that maybe that would, would be more persuasive. So, as I say, I may make that amendment later. Having said that, I've talked about two minutes longer than I thought I would. Again, I think the vast majority of this is fine, and I appreciate everybody's efforts. Thank you.
I think you'll have an opportunity to bring that up when we go back to Commissioner Kramer, who may want to make, make an amendment. But let me first say, is there any other, we'll say, response to public comment? And Commissioner Grimes, I'll put your, your remarks as a response to public comment. Anybody else? All right. See, now, let me just, without being redundant, just point out something which, which may be of assistance when considering this. And Ms. Dennison, you know, appreciate your comments. And as a kindergarten teacher, I assure you, every, every now and then, every one of us may have thought we were in kindergarten while sitting here on occasion. But without being the least bit facetious, on not one occasion in the, over the decade that I've been here, has there ever been a situation where we've had to really even consider removing anybody during the tenure that I had in the board? I picked up that gavel once, and it was as to a, a friend of mine who was an attorney that sort of stood up, was a little bit out of line, called me the next day and apologized. That's it. That's all. Commissioner Grimes is laughing, because he knows who I'm referring to. And, you know, but we don't have that, fortunately, in Lower Marion. So the idea is that if somebody does get a little bit out of hand, and hopefully that never does, does occur, then whoever, be it the, the chair, the president of the board, would have the ability to, to stop, stop it. And, and so that we could go on with the business, business at hand. But I understand the point that's being made. As to the section in, what's it, 78E, where there seems to be some response about, you know, each committee shall report to the Board of Commissioners as deemed appropriate by its chair, or maybe requested by the president of the Board of Commissioners. The, the idea, and I assume, let me back up. I, I am sure, as Vice President Gavert said, this is not, you know, President Sinai saying, ah, let me, you know, corner some additional power here. And I assure you, I didn't leave an envelope of a wish list in his desk. But what this is, is recognizing what actually does take place, and that there is a provision in our code that any commissioner, if there is something that is not on our agenda, would have the ability to have the board place it on the agenda. So that already exists as a possibility. And the items that go on our agenda are to be where there is action to be taken. Are we to move to adopt something? Are we to have, you know, some ordinance presented, some resolution, act, action items? And it's not merely for committee, somebody say, have a committee report, or whatever it is. And so there's a process so that the agenda itself can be controlled. And if by the consultation with the board, someone says, wait a minute, this is important enough to go on the agenda, then the board itself has the ability to go ahead and do that. So this is just a matter of organization as to what we've been, what our practice has, has been. And it is not diminishing any of the rights of, of the members of the board, or at least that, that's how I see it. So with that being stated, I may have taken some of the thunder out of some of the discussion from what I suspect will be a, a motion from Commissioner Kramer, as in Gilda Kramer. And Commissioner Gilda Kramer did promise you the first opportunity. So please, the floor is yours.
Yes. I think that just because our practice has not followed our code, doesn't mean that our code is wrong, and that our practices are right. I actually think that the practices set forth in sections D and E that we've been talking about are the appropriate prac, the appropriate practices. And we just have not been following them. So therefore, I would like to move to delete the changes to 5D and E. And in consideration of Commissioner Grimes' suggestion for Section D, it should read that each committee shall meet upon the call of its chair and the majority of its members, or of the president of the Board of Commissioners, so that a committee can vote, with, you know, with the chair's approval, that a committee can vote, the majority of the members of it can vote, that a committee meeting should be held. And if the, the president of the Board of Commissioners should not be able to just say, no, you can't have a meeting, you can't bring the matters that you've been working on to the board for a full and open public discussion. And that's, you know, the, we, we shouldn't have to have nine members of this board agree that we should have a public discussion about the work of one of our committees. And that's my motion.
Let, let me just, as a point of order, point out, Commissioner, that the way you phrased that, since we meet as a committee as a whole, you then would need the, you would need eight members. You may want to consider adopting Commissioner Grimes' concept that would limit the numbers to those who are appointed to the committee. It's chairs and vice chairs.
I meant as the majority of the members appointed to the committee. That's what I meant. But I'm also, that, that is what I intended, not a majority of the board, the committee as a whole. But those people appointed to it.
And someone can correct me if I'm wrong. I think now we have some committees that only have two members, who have been appointed, a chair and, and a single vice chair, as opposed to three members.
We do have.
Right. So, what, yeah. Once again, my, my suggestion to you would be to, you know, for your motion to adopt, you know, what Commissioner Grimes said, you'd have the chair and vice chairs would agree.
That's fine. I'm fine with that. Chairs and vice chairs.
Was her motion just for D?
So I believe that that is for.
And then to eliminate E.
Or eliminate the changes to E altogether.
All right. So why don't we do these one at a time? Let, let's deal with what would is actually under Section 5, but it is Section 7-8D, which currently has, you know, each committee shall meet upon the call of its is, you know, each committee shall meet upon the call of its Chair, of the President of the Board of Commissioners. All right? That's how it's currently put forth here.
Or.
Or. It says, or of the President.
Yeah. I'm, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, it's, you know, the way it's, the way it's currently presented, in that which is before us, right? Is that each committee shall meet upon the call of its Chair and of the President of the Board of Commissioners. And what Commission, and you'll correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner Kramer, what you were proposing is that each committee shall meet upon the call of its Chair and Vice Chairs or of the President of the Board of Commissioners.
That's correct.
I'll second that.
And Commissioner Grimes seconded that. On that, do we have any discussion on that? Vice President Gaver?
I'm just gonna, is it a unanimous call of its Chair and Vice Chairs?
Yes.
Or is it a majority of its Chair and Vice Chairs?
Well, since we have some committees that only have two members, it would be of a unanimous of its Chair and Vice Chairs.
Okay. Yes.
Okay. Correct.
That's my under contemplation.
President Sinon.
Thank you, Commissioner Bernheim. And, and, you know, I will, so let me, let me just, you know, lay out how I see this, and as President, as, as, sorry, keep doing that. As Commissioner Bernheim said, very much appreciate your help.
Throw me under the bus on this one.
You know, this, this is, you know, I'm working, I'm working through this along with everyone else. So, you, I, I think here are the two, here are the two, you know, forces at play here. I think one is a, a valid recognition that you don't want to, we, we as a Board don't want to empower a President to act against the will of the, of the, the people on the committees, who the President has appointed there, but, but still, like, we would, you know, wouldn't want to do that. The separate, the second, you know, the, the opposing tension is that a large role that the, the President of this Board is appointed to do is to manage the meetings and move them along with, you know, efficiency, right? And, and so you, you figuring out when committees should show up on the agenda, and when they should meet, and when they're at the point where it's appropriate for the whole Board to hear them, is, is really the crux of the matter, right? And, you know, as many of you know, like, this is an issue I've actually thought pretty hard about before, as an issue. And, and, you know, you, to a degree, we're gonna have to make a decision about, do we, do we, you know, place some trust in the, in the, you know, the, the good faith of the, of the President who was elected by the Board of Commissioners to serve them, to do the will of the Board and putting together an efficient agenda to accomplish the, the task of, of, of the Board, right? That's what it comes down to. And, you know, what, what Jody Kelly said is really, I think, the thing that makes it important, which is committees here are not like working committees. They are committees like we're having right now with all of, you know, all 14 of us, and they take the time of all 14 of us. And the threshold for coming to that committee is really important. And when the Chair and the Vice Chairs want to meet with some staff and get some work done, like, they don't need anyone's permission. They just go and do that, right? They just do, uh, uh, 'cause, 'cause it's not a quorum. And, and so, you know, I am going to come down on the side of having the President manage the process, on the view that the President, who doesn't do that very well, doesn't remain present very long. But I completely understand the motivation and the concerns that this language would, would create. I, I, I can't deny that. I'm sympathetic to that point of view. Thank you.
Yeah. And thank you, President Sinon. Before we let anybody else comment, I, I sort of feel compelled, as having sat in your seat, I, I agree 110% with absolutely everything that you stated, which is why I made the point before, is it's not depriving any members of the Board of the opportunity to bring something, bring something forth. And this Board has always made sure that it, it has been inclusive, and it is a matter of agenda efficiency, which has always been a complaint that we, we have received. So I am 110% with you on that, but Commissioner Zella.
To add to the comments with which, with which I agree completely of President Sinon and Commissioner Bernheim, it's agenda management. Agenda management has been a, an issue that has been a challenge from, for this Board and many preceding Boards, because poor agenda management leads to late-night meetings. And that's, that's poor, that's, that's bad governance for everyone in this community. So agenda management is essential to effective Board process, so I do not support the change.
Anybody else? Yes, Commissioner O'Neill.
Oh, yes, thank you. And I absolutely agree with President Bernheim and Commissioner Zella on this, but, but I do just want to elaborate a little bit, because I think that, as much as I understand that what, what we're getting at in terms of the, the flip side of the argument here, it is something that being in Board leadership means that you do get to sort of control and set what discussions happen when. And we have all here been told, no, this topic has to wait, or be patient, or next month, or the month after. And part of our role as electing new leadership means that we have to sort of wait our turn in a way, so that the work as set by Board leadership has a chance to make its way through the process. So, and we meet all the time as subcommittees, or emailing as our standing committees, and that, that's where the, we drive decisions to get us to the point of taking it to leadership. So this is an administrative improvement, so I'm supportive of, of the position as stated by you.
And then, anybody else wants to comment in reference to this? Ever so briefly, Commissioner Grimes.
Yes, so thanks. So let me just say, because I think respectfully, this is being posed as something that my suggestion, at least where it came from me, isn't, is not. When I suggested that the committees should be able to meet if the Chair and the Vice Chairs all unanimously agree, it's not a situation where I think this is going to come up every week, every month, or even every six months. However, all 14 of us come at this Board doing the best job we can, but with different perspectives in many situations, and one person's priority is not always other people's priority. And it's true, we elect leadership, and I, I have every confidence in our current leadership and in past leadership that we've had that I, while I've been sitting up here. However, there are sometimes differences of opinion, and I don't believe that when we, in January, when we elect leaders, we ask our leadership how they feel about every agenda item that may come up in the next two years. So this, to me, at least in my mind, is a stopgap kind of, a fail-safe situation, that if people feel so strongly that are on the committees, that something should be brought up, that the people empowered to lead that committee feel it's that important, okay. So if it takes us 20 more minutes at a Board meeting, then it does. But that's, I just want to be clear on my intention for this, because we all have things that are important to us, and this is an attempt to address that, understanding that our leaders are only approaching this in the way that they deem is the best possible. So thank you.
All valid points, and I don't mean to cut anybody off, but I think we have covered this issue fairly well, both sides of the equation. So I am going to call the vote, and the vote that we are calling is what I'll refer to as the Commissioner Gilda Kramer Amendment to Section 78D. All those in favor, please raise your hand and indicate aye. One, two, three.
Okay.
All those who oppose? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. I did not, no, nine, 10. Okay. So are we, Commissioner Churchill, I did not get, yep, was that an opposed?
I'm voting in favor of the Kramer Amendment.
Okay. All right. So then we have four to 10, the amendment not passed. And Commissioner Gilda Kramer, I think there was something else that you wanted to present.
Yes, I think that the changes to Subpart E of the same section should not be made, because our committees should have an ability to report back on things that they think are important to the Board as a whole.
And the, just for those following along, the actual, that was originally to be deleted in its entirety, and then the amendment to the amendment, it now reads, "Each committee shall report to the Board of Commissioners as may be requested by the President of the Board of Commissioners." I suspect if we were to debate this, we'd have similar discussions that we just had. So the, the current motion, correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner Kramer, is to keep the language as was, as currently exists in our code. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
I think it's balanced, and it strikes the appropriate balance between all the members of the Board and the President of the Board, not just for today, but for the future.
Is there a second to Commissioner, Commissioner Sean Whelan? Thank you. All right. Is there any further discussion on this topic? Seeing none, I will call the vote. All those in favor of the, the amendment as just proposed by Commissioner Kramer, which again is to keep the code, that Section E as currently written, please raise your hand and indicate your approval of that. One, two. All those who are opposed? Okay. That is 12 to 2 by, by my count. The, the motion does not pass. Do you have any other, other motions you'd like to present, Commissioner Kramer?
No, that's it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Is anybody, Commissioner Whelan?
Thank you, Commissioner Bernheim. I think I may be jumping in where a number of people have this, but I would make a motion to amend Section 7-12 on page 10, E, subsection E, and my amendment would simply be to delete the words insolent and/or who becomes boisterous. I think that an excellent point was made, that those were sort of subjective instead of objective terms, and I would keep the rest of the language as amended.
So this is to amend Section 712E by removing the word insolent and boisterous, correct?
No. Or who becomes boisterous.
Or who becomes boisterous.
Yes. Okay. Do we have a, a second on Commissioner Whelan, so this, Commissioner Zella? Do we have any discussion on this amendment? Okay. Seeing none?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Bernheim.
Yeah, go ahead. Commissioner Sean Kramer.
Wasn't quick enough on the draw there. I do have a concern about.
Commissioner Sean Kramer, do me a favor.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna actually get you to have your nose up against the mic.
I'm so sorry.
No, that's quite all right.
My concern about, about having one person be able to, the Presiding Officer be able to remove the person from the meeting remains similar to what Ms. Dennison was saying, that it is still subject, you know, nobody here would do this, I know, but in a, in a future Board, it could be taken as such that, that a Presiding Officer could make a judgment call and have someone removed, even, even with the amendments that Commissioner Whelan has made. At the same time, I don't think that it's feasible to have a vote of the majority of the Board before you remove somebody who's threatening, because that takes time, and we may not have that time. So I'm, I'm just trying to figure out what a reasonable compromise between the two might be.
Okay.
I don't know if that would be, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, 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 I, I didn't mean to rudely interrupt you, but right now, we're being a little bit more myopic.
I'm sorry.
And the only thing that we're dealing with right now is the amendments as proposed by Commissioner Whelan, and you may want to bring up that point that you're raising about not having the Board being able, in essence, to override the decision of whoever the Chair is. But hold that thought, all right?
Okay.
So let's first deal with Commissioner Whelan's motion. Is there anybody else with any, any further, further comment on that? Let me just add is that I completely understand the concept of trying to remove that aspect of this, which is judgmental, but the term slanderous is also judgmental. Go ask Sarah Palin, as is the word obscene, which is in the eyes of the beholder. So all, all, right, right. So all of it has a matter of being subject to some interpretation. There is another part of our Township Code, which does not permit not just members of the public, but members of this Board from acting improper, and that the, the Chair then has the, the ability to go ahead and have one of our members scolded, for lack of better terminology, for, for the moment. So if we're gonna keep this in there, whoever is chairing the committee is gonna have to exercise some discretion if somebody is out of line, and these are just some phrases that may trigger somebody being inappropriate. So while I appreciate the idea of trying to make it more circumspect, I would not support this amendment. Is there anybody else who wants to make any further comment? All right. Seeing none, all those then in favor of Commissioner Whelan's motion to remove the word insolent and, and the phrase or who becomes boisterous, please raise your hands in support. That's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. All those opposed, just to make sure we have the right count. One, two, three, four, five. That doesn't add up.
Well, it could be a summary.
The Chair, I voted affirmatively.
You voted affirmatively?
I'll be prepared.
All right. So then that would be eight to.
Eight, six.
Right. Eight to six, and then that, that motion does, does indeed carry. Now, there may be some other motions to this paragraph. Commissioner Sean Kramer?
Funny you said that. Yes, I'm trying to find the compromise here, and I wonder, oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Do you want to do it now?
Perhaps I can help a little with this one.
Please.
The clause about the Board having to stop, perhaps in the middle of somebody throwing a fit in the, in the meeting room and having them vote.
Yeah.
It seemed a little bit silly, but it also is redundant, because if you look at the full code that, that Jody passed out this evening, and, and you have, you can see that in 711E, the Presiding Officer is responsible for the orderly conduct of business at each Board meeting, and shall preserve order and decorum at such meetings. But there's also a clause in 711C that says that as far as rulings by the Presiding Officer, any ruling by the Presiding Officer may be overruled by the majority of the members present. So there, there seem to be other clauses that already kind of covered that, and it was unnecessary. So that's really the only intent between cleaning up that particular section.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no, no, I haven't answered my question. Thank you.
President Sinon?
I'm, I'm going to speak in favor of redundancy here, just because, you know, I didn't flip to 711, and, you know, there, there's something to be said for issues of, of this, that, that being redundant, so it's all in the same paragraph, you know, telegraphs, really, the intent is not to have one person making the decision. And I read it as, you know, the, the, the Board would only vote to overrule, they didn't have to vote to support, and so, you know, in emergency, hey, you know, we have to remove that person still, you know, everyone on the Board's just kind of nodding, right? It's only when they're like, no, you, you shouldn't do that, that they vote to, to, to overrule. You know, I, I think that's an appropriate, I think that's appropriate. I, I take Commissioner Bernheim's point that this has not been a situation that has happened in Lower Merion, but I look across the country, and I hope this is a situation that will never happen in Lower Merion, but one can foresee a world where, where it does, and these codes don't get changed very often, and, you know, I think most of what we're discussing tonight is really, you know, protecting ourselves in the abstract against things that we hope are not the case, right? And, and this is one of them. So, so, so I, you know, I would, I would move to put back unless permission to continue is granted by the majority vote of the Board members present. No, no, that was a second. That was a second.
We have a, a second to that. Yes, Commissioner McKeon, do we have any further discussion on that? Yeah, Commissioner. Commissioner McKeon?
Thank you. I just wanted to read a section here from the Home Rule Charter of Pennsylvania, Section 403. It states, "Any person making offensive, insulting, threatening, insolent, slanderous, or obscene remarks, or who becomes boisterous, or who makes threats against any person or against any public order and security while in the council chamber, shall be forthwith banned by the presiding officer from further audience at the meeting unless permission to continue be granted by the majority vote of the council members present." So we've got boilerplate language that's tested and true and used all throughout the Commonwealth, and we're sitting here tweaking and I think being afraid of, you know, what could happen, and so I support this motion, and I really think that the, we don't need to go and tweak and pull apart our own ordinances here, because they were drafted in a smart way. We're using language that other municipalities use.
All right, thank you, Commissioner McKeon. Any other comments yet? Vice President Gaver?
I disagree with Commissioner McKeon here, and where I agree with Commissioner Sinai is, we've started seeing this around the country, and it's really sad that we've seen this at meetings, school board meetings, township meetings, municipality meetings. It's really sad when people are getting up and threatening and making these, you know, insults and comments. Thankfully, we haven't seen it in Lower Merion, the discourse has been much better than that, and I expect it to continue that way. However, if that happens, I think there's more of a chance of a meeting getting out of control if all of a sudden the whole board has to vote, and there's back and forth, no, that person's not being obscene, and then we, and then there's this whole, then you have the opportunity for the whole board to be going back and forth at each other, rather than in this one situation, this isn't giving, you know, a ridiculous amount of power to one person, this is saying, somebody has to take control and say, this has to stop, done, over, not going back and forth with an entire board. I personally believe if this situation were to come up, which I hope it doesn't, having the whole board, having the opportunity to overrule the one, the presiding person, can create more chaos rather than solve it, and will create a situation where we could be in a much worse situation. So I'm not going to support this amendment, and that's where I am. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vice President Gaver. Anybody else who wishes to make a comment? Well, let me just point out something as a matter of drafting, if I may. If Section 711 has that any ruling by the presiding officer may be overruled by a majority of the members, then by eliminating this, we have not really changed the fact that the majority of the board could go ahead and eliminate it. If we were going to keep this so that the presiding officer would have the authority to go ahead and remove somebody who is inappropriate without having to stop and have a debate, which by the way, I believe is what we ought to do, there would have to be another amendment to it that would say, notwithstanding the provisions of Section 711, the presiding officer could go do that. So I point that out just as a drafting change, that if this does not prevail, this current motion, then we would have to have a little further tinkering of it. With that being said, currently on the floor is a motion to keep in the provision as drafted unless permission to continue is granted by the majority vote of the board members present. So unless there is any further discussion on that, we can call the vote. All those in favor of that motion, please raise your hand and signify your approval. One, two, three, four, five. All those who do not approve the amendment, raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five.
Seven.
Six, seven.
Seven, seven.
Seven, seven, so that it does not pass. Okay, are there any then further amendments? All right, so what I just indicated is a matter of drafting, we would have to note that on this, the carve out, that this is, notwithstanding Section 711, give me half a second. All right, so what would have to occur is that where it reads that "Any person making offensive, insulting, threatening, slanderous, or obscene remarks, or who makes threats against any person or against public order and security while in the boardroom shall, notwithstanding the provisions of Section 711, be forthwith removed at the direction of the presiding officer from further audience at the meeting." So that's just to clarify the consistency. Everybody follow what I'm saying? Seeing a lot of blank looks, do I have a second to that? Thank you, Vice President Gaver. Do we have any discussion on that? All right, all those then in favor of making that amendment so that this is consistent, please raise your hand indicating aye. Any opposed? Seeing one, two opposed, so that amendment does carry.
Who was the second opposition?
Commissioner Gilda Kramer and Commissioner Scott. Give me another drink, Zella. All right, are there any other...
You finished my drink.
Are there any other motions to be made? Seen none, then I will call the vote for consideration for the recommendation of the board, the notice to intend to adopt the ordinance as presented in the amendments and as amended here this evening.
Orders to advertise.
So that's correct, it is ordinance to advertise. Thank you very much. I was, you know, almost jumping right past the board meeting.
Good try.
All right, so this again is for advertisement. All those in favor, please raise your hand, signaling your approval. Any opposed? I'm sorry, those who are virtual, I did not see whether there are any who are opposed? None, okay, so this then carries, and hopefully then we can do this on consent. We then have, believe it or not, one other item on the Administrative and Human Resource Committee, and that is located on page 15 of our agenda, and this is to consider for recommendation to the Board of Commissioners the appointment of Lois Neff and Jennifer Pryor as alternates to the Human Relations Commission. I will so make that motion, do we have a second? Thank you, Vice President Gaver. Any discussion from members of the board? Any public comment? Seen none, then I would just certainly like to thank Lois and Jennifer for their service, and we'll call the vote. All those in favor, raise your hand signaling aye. Any opposed? Seen none, it so passes, and that completes the business of the Administrative and Human Resource Committee for this evening. President Sinai.
Thank you, Commissioner Bernheim. So we have one remaining item on our agenda for this evening, and that's the Board of Commissioners meeting. So will the February 16th, 2022, meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Township of Lower Merion please come to order? And please all rise for the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Bernheim.
Present.
Mr. Churchill.
Here.
Mr. Courtney.
Present.
Mr. Gaver.
Present.
Mr. Grimes.
Here.
Ms. Gilda Kramer.
Here.
Mr. McComb.
Here.
Mr. McKeon.
Here.
Ms. O'Neil.
Here.
Mr. Stevenson.
Present.
Mr. Whelan.
Here.
Mr. Zella.
Here.
Mr. Sinai.
Here.
Mr. President, we have a farm.
Thank you, Madam Secretary.
Point of information, I don't recall my name being...
It was twice.
We did, and there were noises, so we thought your speaker was, your mic was not working.
I guess I have a gravelly voice, thank you.
Commissioner Churchill, we will take it that you are here. And we will move on to the approval of the minutes, and I move that we approve the minutes of the biennial reorganization meeting held on January 3rd, 2022, and a stated meeting of the Board of Commissioners held on January 19th, 2022, as distributed. Do I have a second? Thank you, Vice President Gaver. Any Commissioner comment, any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Atentions? Okay, Madam Secretary, that passes. Just a few announcements, the board met an executive session earlier this evening to receive reports from its professional staff regarding litigation, personnel matters, Lower Merion School District, coronavirus, and a property at 1400 Mill Creek Road. Also, Monday, February 21st, 2022, is President's Day, it's a legal holiday. Administration Building and the Township Libraries will be closed for business that day. However, our Public Works Department will be busy, there will be refuse and recycling collection that day. It is not a holiday for the refuse and recycling schedule. So this is the point of the agenda, where Commissioner Bernheim referred to earlier, it's a public privilege of the floor, it is a section of the meeting where members of the public may address the board on matters that are not on the agenda, or any other public matters in which the township has jurisdiction or authority. I'm going to ask you to keep your comments three minutes or less. If you're speaking for a group, you get five minutes, and you're there, please introduce yourself.
Good evening. My name is Carol Strickland, I live in Wynwood, but tonight I am here to read a letter from the Federation of Civics of Lower Merion and Norbert, to township staff, committee, and commission members, and to the Board of Commissioners. This letter comes from Ricky Guerra, President of the Federation. I am writing to apprise you of an ongoing concern that has now been a topic of discussion during meetings of the Federation of Civics of Lower Merion Township and Norbert, the Federation, on multiple occasions. The specific concern is about staff's intentional omission of institutional treatment in both the initial and now the second draft of the SALDO Code. As you may know, civic members within the Federation were and continue to be actively engaged in the comment and discussion period for both the initial draft and now the second draft of the SALDO. The Federation spoke very early about its concern that the SALDO should effectuate some level of treatment for institutions, just as it does for residential and commercial property. Despite the valid and timely raised concern, township staff has decided to omit institutions from the second draft of the SALDO. In the estimation of the Federation, this approach is not only unwise, but also fraught with the distinct drawbacks of sporadic, rather than planned, institutional growth, and even worse, a development playing field for institutions that remains undetermined and unclear. The decision to leave institutions untreated in the SALDO flies in the face of what the 2016 Comprehensive Plan envisioned, utilization of the township's tools of policies and land regulations to permit the evolution of institutions while mitigating negative externalities upon areas where institutions are located. Please see the 2016 Comprehensive Plans, Goals, and Objectives, Land Use on page 199. The trend to push institutional treatment out of sea-changing documents like the zoning code adopted in 2020, and now the SALDO, is consciously ignoring existing issues with institutional evolution, not solving them. In short, the Federation wishes for staff to consider institutions in the finalized SALDO Code, because not doing so simply kicks the ever-growing snowball of unaddressed institutional development down the road, and leaves the interim permutations of institutional evolutions subject to no standards at all. Thank you for your consideration of the Federation's input, and please do not hesitate to contact us with any follow-up questions. Respectfully, Ricky M. Guerra, President of the Federation of Civic Associations of Lower Merion and Norbert, and I thank you for listening to this.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Strickland, and thank you to the Federation for your comment.
Joseph Aperson, Balla Kinwood. I wanted to speak about the population growth based on the census, and what the board was doing prior to that, what the board also has on its agenda in the next couple of weeks or months with regards to the development along St. Asif's. In 2010, the popul, and I'm speaking about Ward 9, the population of Ward 9 was 5,675. 2020 census was 6,818, which is a 20% increase. The Balla part of Balla Kinwood had a 34% increase from 2010 to 2020, and that's without the new apartment buildings that are going up and already went up because the census was done by 2020. We have traffic issues, parking issues, residence issues, and possibly, you know, it's going to reach a point where the development is like, there's no more to go, and no more, nothing's going to happen. You know, in the new development along St. Asif's, it's mentioned that we're going to have retail and hundreds of new apartments. On Balla Avenue right now, there's an empty lot that Cross Properties is supposed to be building, a new building. On Kinwood Road, in the Grant Building, there's the first floor, which is supposed to be over 1,000 feet of retail, I believe, is empty. According to Cross, they don't have any plans to lease it out because no one's interested in it. So what's going to happen when you start developing along St. Asif's and there's no interest in retail? It's going to be empty, it's going to be life maybe, you know? Right now on Balla, that's an ugly lot. That's one thing. And then with regards to the retail development on Kinwood Road, the township recently installed parking meters along Kinwood Road, right in front of the Grant Building, because of the retail establishments that are going to be there. But there are no retail establishments right now, so people can't park there, at least legally, more than two hours or paying meters. So would it be possible to not enforce in that area until we actually need the parking? The second issue, and I'll also bring it up under public comment, is I sent an email to the public comment email address before the November Board of Commissioners meeting, and I was actually looking, you know, interested in that, it was regards to the volunteer firefighter credit. But my points were never addressed, and it was never read. Now, I don't know, does public comment, is that email means that that's as if I was speaking? Is it just an email to the board, similar to board at whatever the email address is? And if not, there should be a way to say that when I send an email to publiccomment@lowermerion.org, I get an auto reply saying, "Your email was received." That way at least I know it was received. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public in the boardroom who wish to speak? Jody, do we have anyone online?
Ms. Adrian Seltzer.
Hello, Adrian Seltzer, Wynwood. I would like to thank the members of the board, Ms. Joan Kramer, Ms. Gilda Kramer, and Rick Churchill, for attending the stand-up for Lower Merion and Norbert meeting that was held on Sunday, that just gave the public the opportunity to address their suggestions for the American Rescue Plan funds for the remaining 13 million. I appreciate the fact that there is now an ad hoc committee to address that, but I didn't see any of the meetings in the calendar through April. So in an effort to maybe address the public, you send out this really nice Lower Merion Township newsletter, which is more of a newspaper, and in the last two issues, there was nothing on it about public, you know, the board wanting public comments about the allocation of the American Rescue Plan funds. Might I suggest in your next issue, you have something in there? That way it reaches people who don't have email and might not know about this any other way but reading the paper. Also, Commissioner Gaver? Also, Commissioner Gavin, I wanted to correct a bit of misunderstanding on the Zoom links. Secretary Kelly does not send out the Zoom link. She sends out a link to register for the meeting. And that is, that in itself is a security protocol through Zoom that you're able to do. So when you get the registration link, you fill out your name, your address, your email address, and then you get a Zoom link. She doesn't send out the Zoom, it comes automatic after the, after the, after you register. So you do have to have your address in there, you do know where it comes from. And I've seen people sharing the registration link all over Facebook, so you're still creating more work for Ms. Kelly. That is totally unnecessary. Thank you. Oh, no, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Sir. Jody, anyone else online?
No.
Okay, thank you. We have one written comment, and this gets to partly to Mr. Abramson's comment about what happens with the comments that are sent in. This is a comment that was sent in. The full email was circulated to the entire Board. Here in this meeting, we just synopsize it. So John Mayer from Belmont Hills wrote in to request the ARP funds be allocated to extend the patio at the Belmont Hills Library. So now it's the opportunity for any members of this Board to respond to public privilege. Any Board member wish to respond? Commissioner McCann.
Thank you, President Sinai. I appreciate Mr. Mayer sending in that request. John Mayer is on the Board of Belmont Hills Library Board, I believe, is also a longtime member of the Belmont Hills Civic Association. So just wanted to discuss briefly some of the outreach I've had in Belmont Hills because I've gotten a lot of ARP requests. I've met with members of the Belmont Hills Civic, Belmont Hills Library Board, a lot of residents in person. And the requests have included some small things, like more trashcans at McMorn Park, plantings around the Belmont Hills Library, trees on the hill on Jefferson Street by the rail line, four benches at McMorn Park, resurfacing the hockey rink, patio extension at the Belmont Hills Libraries, as John mentioned. And last week, I had the opportunity to discuss some of these with our Finance Chair, Scott Zelloff. And Commissioner Zelloff had mentioned, you know, the Finance Committee has had to evaluate numerous requests, and it's very difficult if you have small things such as a couple trashcans here or there. I mean, that would lead itself to, you know, possibly tens of thousands of requests. ARP money, we did not have serious revenue replacement issues in the township because we deferred, I think, about $7 million in capital projects in 2020. And as a result of that, the CIP got backed up, but we didn't have revenue loss. And that's why a lot of the ARP money has then been put into some, some capital projects. So, you know, again, when I look at some of these projects with like some trees, you know, that's, if it's maybe tied into another project, it could possibly work. I know the McMorn Park benches, Donna Heller, who was here earlier, said those benches are going to likely be replaced soon through the operations budget. If you look at them, they're, they're old. Gully Run Park, which is near my house, I hardly see anyone there, that has very nice new benches, so I hope McMorn gets new ones soon. Staff's evaluating the safety condition for the surface of the hockey rink. It was resurfaced in 2017. It's possible ARP money could be used for, but really if only a, a safety issue was identified. So that brings us to something that I think is a very exciting potential project, and that's the library patio at the Belmont Hills Library. The, currently, the patio just faces the parking lot, but there may be the opportunity to extend it or actually put it on the opposite side of the building where it would face McMorn Park. So that way the library could connect to the park a little bit, and you could actually there, you know, watch games being played and also do library events outside. John Mayer, just to quote him briefly in email, he says, "The patio would be beneficial for library staff, patrons of the library, families watching their children play sports such as soccer, baseball, and softball. This would be a great addition to McMorn Park and the, the community." So Belmont Hills Library, very small library in the township. It opened last of all the libraries that were redone back in 2018. So what I'm going to try to do going forward is work with township staff to see if we can get something feasible for the Belmont Hills Library, some kind of a patio extension, and maybe something we try to plug into the CIP and then fast-track through with ARP funds. Commissioner Zelloff had mentioned that to me. So I need to do more outreach with staff and actually check out the library, but that's what's going through my head right now when I look at Belmont Hills funding. And again, I appreciate Mr. Mayer sending a simple email, you know, it covered it, and I'm hoping to just respond to the community with what I've seen so far for ARP money in Belmont Hills.
Thank you, Commissioner McCann. Any other commissioners wish to respond to public privilege? Commissioner O'Neil.
Thank you, just very quickly, and in response to Mr. Abramson, I, I agree. I don't think that it is too far afield to, or too much to suggest an automatic reply when somebody has reached out to our secretary to say, "Thank you," in almost sort of a canned response, is automatic, if it isn't too much administrative trouble, and there may be reasons not to do it. But I understand the point, that it's just a confirmation that it hasn't been lost. So I would, I would like to support that, only again if it isn't too difficult for the, for the Township Secretary.
And Jody, you must be.
I do actually respond to every single email that I get.
I bet, yes.
I did advise Mr. Abramson that I don't have any record of having received that, so perhaps it didn't get through, maybe he mistyped the email address.
Yes.
I do respond to every single email that is sent to that email address.
Very good. Thank you.
So, so I think the message to the community is that if you send an email to public comment and you do not get a response, send it again.
Send it again.
Because our secretary responds to every single email that comes in. Thank you. Any other commissioners wish to respond to public privilege? Seeing none, this is, we'll move to public comment. This is a section of our meeting where members of the public may address the Board on any agenda items. Again, please keep your comments three minutes or less unless you're speaking on behalf of a group. Mr. Abramson.
Thank you. Joseph Abramson, Balla Kinwood. First, with regards to the Parks and Recreation Committee Transit Corridor being allowed to use the Kinwood Heritage Trail as a, now that the lights are going to be on over the bridge. I just have a question, because I know that we have some parks that are open until 10 at night. Now, Kinwood Heritage Trail is only open until sunset, but in like the wintertime, that could be like 4:30, 5 o'clock, you know, so people can't go walking or biking even, even. I understand the concern, though, of having a trail open at night rather than a park. But that should just be something to consider. And what exactly is a transit corridor? Does that mean someone has to be going from Lower Marion to Philadelphia? And if, if someone's on the trail then and a cop asks where you're going, do they then get followed to Philadelphia or back to Lower Marion? So, you know, is that even enforceable? And I know that you're, you're working with Philadelphia with regards to safety. It might, maybe one of the suggestions to have those, similar to college campuses, those blue, blue lights with a phone or something on there. Next, I want to talk about the, the advertisement to, the, the motion to advertise an ordinance with regards to what we spoke about earlier with the Human Resources and Administration Committee. In 7-10B, it says that we would have a stated monthly meeting, and the next section is it will be at the time advertised. So if we're getting rid of the specific, you know, your, the next meeting will be at 7:30 or whatever the case may be. Can, how often does the, can the time change? So if we, if we advertise that the next meeting is going to be a month from now at, at 6 o'clock, is that, does that mean it's 6 o'clock? Or can, can it be changed within a day or two or three? Also, with regards to the emails, I know that we're, we're getting, you know, you get emails from, to public comment, but I don't know, I didn't see a section here that says that that's actual, you know, I know you say that it's part of, it's part of the common practice, but is that actually the code that you have to receive emails and put it into the Commission, Board of Commissioners meetings? And that, also, in the, at the end, you have that public comment can be deferred if the meeting's running late. I just wanted to clarify that that's public comment and not public privilege, because public privilege can't be deferred. Finally, it says, you know, the Presiding Officer may kick out someone if they're, if they're causing trouble. But I think that to answer some of the, or alleviate some of the concerns raised, it should be, you know, so we don't want to have a whole, you know, discussion back and forth while, while something's going on. But, you know, after the Presiding Officer kicks out that person, that decision should be ratified by the Board. So, you know, the Presiding Officer may kick out, or whatever the case may be, subject to then future ratification by the Board. And I think that could help some, solve some of the issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Abramson. Anyone else in the room wish to make public comment? Seeing none, anyone online wishing to make public comment? Jody?
I do not see anyone.
Sorry, that's a no?
I don't see anyone.
Okay. We had one public comment that was submitted by email. Kathleen Applenell from the Lower Marion Conservancy wrote in support of conditions being imposed with regard to the roof removal on a portion of the structure at 1400 Mill Creek Road. Before I ask for whether Board members wish to respond to any of the comments, Jody, could you just respond to Mr. Abramson's question about the advertisement of the time? And so, so currently, the time that we advertise for the meetings also is not the time that's in the code anyway.
Right.
So, so what is the process for advertising the time?
So basically, the regular stated Board meeting, we won't typically change the time of that. That's very rare. It will almost always be at 7:30. It's advertised in the newspaper generally the Sunday before the month starts. It's also posted on our website calendar. If for some reason that time changes, it is posted on the website calendar, you know, that the time has been changed, but it's really, really rare that we change a time of a Board meeting. You know, committee meetings may change, but, you know, because they're determined as we go along, but the regular stated monthly meeting almost always occurs at 7:30 on the third Wednesday, with the exception of August.
Thank you, Jody. Any commissioners wish to respond to public comment? Okay, seeing none. We are on to the consent calendar. Does any Commissioner wish to remove anything from consent? Okay. So I guess I, I will move that we approve the consent calendar as presented and amended, or I guess we didn't amend it, as presented, and including the items from our earlier committee meetings tonight, the Police Committee, the Finance Committee, and Administrative and Human Resource Committee meetings. Do you have a second? Thank you, Commissioner Grimes. Madam Secretary, we, I guess, no comment on the consent calendar. Will you please call the roll?
Thank you. Mr., for approval of the consent calendar as presented with the addition of the items from earlier. Mr. Bernheim.
Aye.
Mr. Churchill.
Yes.
Mr. Courtney.
Aye.
Mr. Gavin.
Yep.
Mr. Grimes.
Yes.
Ms. Gilda Kramer.
Yes, but I abstain as to support the resolution regarding the exoneration from collection of township real estate taxes.
Thank you. Mr. McComb.
Yes.
Mr. McKean.
Yes.
Ms. O'Neil.
Mr. Stevenson.
Aye.
Mr. Whalen.
Yes.
Mr. Zello.
Aye.
Mr. Sinai.
Yes.
The consent calendar is duly adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We are now on to the adoption of an ordinance. And so I will move that we adopt ordinance, so Chapter 145, Vehicles in Traffic for West Princeton Road Stop Sign, a Dering Lane Parking Prohibition. So it's an ordinance to amend the code of the Township of Lower Marion, Chapter 145, thereof, entitled vehicles in traffic, Article 15, schedules, Section 145-108, Schedule 8, stop intersections by establishing a stop intersection in West Princeton Road at Kinwood Circle, and by amending Section 145-114, Schedule 14, stopping or standing prohibited by prohibiting stopping or standing on both sides of Dering Lane from North Eithan Avenue up to and including the cul-de-sac on weekdays from 2:00 p.m. until 3:30 p.m. This ordinance was advertised for, authorized for advertisement at a stated meeting of the Board of Commissioners held January 19th, 2022, and duly advertised in the February 5th, 2022 additions of the Times Herald. Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner O'Neil. Any Commissioner questions or comments on this? Okay, seeing none. Jody, do we have public comment on this? That was earlier.
No, that was earlier.
Okay, so I will call the vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand.
Do we need a roll call?
A roll call, sorry, thank you.
Thank you. For the adoption of ordinance 4236, Mr. Bernheim.
Aye.
Mr. Churchill.
Yes.
Mr. Courtney.
Aye.
Mr. Gavin.
Yes.
Mr. Grimes.
Yes.
Ms. Sean Kramer.
Yes.
Ms. Gilda Kramer.
Yes.
Mr. McComb.
Yes.
Mr. McKean.
Yes.
Ms. O'Neil.
Aye.
Mr. Stevenson.
Aye.
Mr. Whalen.
Yes.
Mr. Zello.
Aye.
Mr. Sinai.
Yes.
The ordinance is duly adopted.
Thank you. And now, on your notes to me, it says calling of the roll. I will read it more carefully next time. Next item is unfinished business. Does anyone have unfinished business to come forward to the Board? Okay, new business, say new business forward to the Board. Anyone on there? Okay. With that, that is the adjournment of tonight's meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lower Marion Township.[1729.21]